Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Go ahead, Commish, get your job, your dog.
Get your job.
Get your job, yeah. Take care of the dogs.
Hold on, baby. Hold on. Ready? Good morning, everyone. Today, we have a female boxer, Brendel, about one and a half years old. Very nice temperament, kind of smart. Here. Sit.
He hasn't changed over the TV.
Lay. And he's not hungry, no?
Can you get us working?
We'd like to see what's going on.
Is it working? I didn't tell her to get up yet. See how good she... Well, Sunday is Easter, so come down to the Lorraine County Dog Kennel and pick up a pet for your family. We have many to choose from, big ones, small ones. Put right in an Easter basket, so thank you very much.
Thanks, Lori. Welcome to the April 5th, 2007 meeting, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Our quote for today: "The first day of spring is one thing, and the first spring day is another. The difference between them is sometimes as great as a month."
Or a couple of days.
A couple of days, maybe. Teresa?
At 10 o'clock, we're supposed to have a presentation by Rodney Abukowski, clerk of courts on predatory plastic. Number one, job and family services bills.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
No investments appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye. Transfers?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Commissioners, I have another piece of action that we need to add to our advances for transit. I'll pass this down. Because of the changes that have been going on right now, especially at the federal level, we haven't received all our appropriations yet from the FTA. And we just worked on this this morning. I worked with Lisa on it. We need to do an advance in the transit of about $750,000. We have to pull it from a couple of accounts because we don't have that much money in appropriated funds. And we have been guaranteed, correctness?
Yes.
That we will be receiving reimbursement for that $750,000. I hope rather quickly because now we're living on the interest curve. And every day without that kind of money is interest loss to us. So hopefully, the federal government will get our allocation in here pretty quick for transit.
Any idea how long, Lisa?
Tom said he felt within the next couple of weeks, for sure.
So two- to three-week lag that we've got to front the money?
Yes. He knows as soon as it hits, we're going to write that down.
Okay.
We need to do that, Tom, and you need to stay on top of this. Thank you, Commissioners.
Ma'am, clerk, I vote aye.
Do you want that, or?
Yes. So you want... Is that a motion that you're making to approve that one?
No, I'm voting aye on the advances and repayments, and that being a part of it.
Oh, including it? Okay. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye. Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye. Bills?
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Now, Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdiction of Lorraine County Commissioners?
Commissioners, I will request an executive session for the purpose of discussing ongoing contract negotiations with the United Steelworkers of America and the Teamsters. I also am in receipt of a fact-finding report concerning the United Steelworkers of America that we need to act upon. Our labor consultant will be joining us in executive session if he gets here because he's tied up in the bad weather coming up from Columbus. But I anticipate him arriving between 10:30 and 11:00. There was some accidents out there from the icing on the highway. And I haven't seen the sheep. I think we have to discuss a couple of potential new hires also. These are all permitted under the sunshine law.
Thank you.
Authorize various locations for Lorraine County public employees' discounts. Cedar Point tickets will be $33 for adults and $11.95 for juniors and seniors, 62 and older, sorry. Children 2 and under are free. These tickets will be available for the holiday weekend. Soak City tickets are $23. Geogol Lake will be $21 for adult, $11.95 for juniors and seniors. Children 2 and under are free. And the Metro Parks and Rainforest tickets are $9 for ages 12 and older and $4 for ages 2 to 11. Employees can purchase tickets in the purchasing department by money order certified check. No cash will be taken, and also family and friends, Lorraine County Community Alliance, and all county agency board members.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
How come we don't have a zoo in Lorraine County?
We do.
There we are.
Well, I thought that was the circus. We do have a zoo. We have it out at the Lorraine County Kennel. We just have canines.
I like to see monkeys, the whole nine yards, but anyways, go ahead.
We'll add it to a line item, Budget Commissioner.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Under community development, accept the recommendation of the Tax and Century Review Council and per the report, which includes a review of the 33 tax abatement agreements and recommendation to continue 29 for one year. Acknowledge expiration of two and terminate two and recommend to amend three due to change in ownerships of the company.
So moved.
Second, I believe Mr. Twining has some comments. Careful.
We are required by law to review these annually. It's every place outside of the city of Alaria and Lorraine that have tax abatement, and we're down now to where we have 33 because of the inventory tax going away. We'll have fewer every year. We did, by and large, find that most of those were in order. We are recommending two be terminated because they didn't live up to the obligations. One actually moved back to Cuyahoga County, so that one's been terminated. And one to be amended. There are three to be amended. They were just companies have been bought out, so the names of the companies have been changed. And then two were up for retirement. So right now, if nothing else happens, we'll have 31 next year. It's important that you know that we faced a $1,000 a year fine if we did not electronically submit that last Thursday, even though technically, we normally ask for the resolution before we submit. We went ahead and submitted, so you're doing this retroactive to that date.
Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Under job and family services, instruct clerk to request for proposals for the fowling and to be open on April 23rd in the Commissioners' Public Carrying Room. One is non-emergency transportation notice will be published in the Journal on April 9th and 16th and open at 2:00 p.m. Two, child daycare provider pre-certification training and follow-up support notice to be in the Chronicle on April 9th and 16th and open at 2:30. And then the next one's teens activities. This notice will be in the Chronicle on April 16th and 23rd and open at 3:00 on April 30th.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Just a question.
Okay.
My agenda says April 9th and 16th. I heard you read 16th and 23rd. I assume that's a change. So I just wanted to verify that. Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Under transit, reduce the routes for Lorraine County Transit to be effective May 1st, 2007.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
Mr. Ferguson, any discussion at all, Mr. Ferguson?
Well, Mr.--
We just loaned you three-quarter of a million. You may as well tell us about the reduced routes.
The only discussion I have is that we had four public meetings that we held in April, and we did make some changes based on comments that we got at those public hearings. I tried to adjust the schedules, the reductions a little bit, primarily to accommodate people going to work. So hopefully, we've done a little bit better than that. Of course, you never can fit everybody in there, but that's kind of the main thing.
Do we know how much this is going to save us with the reductions?
It's intended to save at least $400,000 between now and the end of the year.
We were hopeful, and we waited until May. We were hopeful that we would be able to get some additional assistance. But that's not looking very positive at this point, so let me directly say this. This is a consequence of what appears to be a successful referendum on the initiative and the leadership that the Commissioners are providing with regard to the taxing issue. And there may be more cuts on the way. We're looking at advertising revenue to shore up some of the financing in transit, and if that doesn't develop the way we anticipated developing, we may be back here again with some additional cuts. We will live within the budget that the Commissioners have provided, and that's a half a million dollars from the general fund, which is still substantial. And we will be working on what we're going to look like next year because we got to start now because I'm not anticipating being able to have the goodwill of the Board for another half a million next year, given the current structure. So just while we're talking about transit, let me put it out there. This is just the beginning of changes to these type of services. And it is a consequence of not being able to have the funding to support these non-mandatory services, but vital and really needed services in Lorraine County. So we'll be back probably in about four or five months, getting ready for the next year. We'll be having public hearings again, I think, in August, September, and October because it's going to take that much lead time to effectuate those changes.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Under workforce development agency, instruct clerk to request for proposals for various programs. Notice will be published in the Chronicle on April 19th, 16th, and 23rd and open at 2:00 p.m. on April 30th for one, paid and unpaid work experience, internships and job shadowing opportunities, leadership summits, soft skills and career exploration, summer employment opportunities, and tutoring and study skills, dropout prevention, and mentoring.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Instruct clerk to request for proposals for one-stop operator for the adult and dislocated worker. Notice will be in the Journal on April 9th, 16th, and 23rd and open at 2:30 on April 30th.
So moved.
Do you have any... Second, do you have any insight on this one-stop operator? Is that a position?
Thank you. It's not a position. It's the employment network, which is what we call the one-stop right now. We do an RFP for a vendor to provide the services within that one-stop operation. For about a decade, we've been partners with the Workforce Institute, which is a collaboration between JBS, the College, the Chamber of Commerce, and some private sector membership on the Workforce Institute Board. We have to go out every three years by law under our federal requirements for funding and doing what they call competitive process. It's not a seal bid. They just want to make sure that we're looking at the marketplace, making sure that we're paying a fair amount and not overpaying for the services. That said, the RFP is going on and working with Vivian right now. We may recommend structurally bringing some elements that we're currently doing an RFP with back in-house. The last two years, we have seen some real changes in workforce development with the state, and they're continuing to evolve. And you can see what the Governor's Office is doing right now. I have met a few times with the College, and we've talked about programmatically how to make sure that we stay ahead of the power curve with where those dollars and initiatives are going to go. And Ms. Alexander and I will be working on this, I would say actively for the next month or two, but we still need to go out with the RFP, and then we will break out the services that you want to bid, continue to bid out, and the services that you want to bring in-house. So we'll have a lot more for you, and we have to have this all done by June. But you haven't seen this process yet because we were renewing the old contract. We had up to three years to do that. And we're out of renewals.
Thank you.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Under the engineer war contract to Kocosi Materials Frederickstown in the amount of $258,562.50 for the asphalt materials for Lorraine County Highway Department to be paid from the supplies and materials account, being funded 100% by MVGT funds. Two bids were received being Kocosi, and the product will be from the Columbia Station Plant.
So moved.
Second, discussion.
I see Mr. Carney's here. Did you have anything? I saw both bids were from Kocosi. They bid against each other? Come on, you want to watch yourself on TV.
Good morning, good morning. The bids are advertised as law to, as we do in the most populous newspapers, as well as Cleveland Construction News Services. Reason why there was two bids is that they have two plants, and thus, two companies. And these were the only two bids received, and we expect this ever so often. The cost is not necessarily the materials, but the huge portion of these costs are the trucking. And the best quality that we could get would be a local supplier. Get a hotter mix, get it quicker, more reliable. And by law, if I could say that, the low man wins.
But this bid was a little bit higher than the other bid, wasn't it?
The engineer's estimate was 262, and so we're underneath our estimate.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski. War contract area material Sandusky for limestone aggregate for Lorraine County Highway Department to be paid from the supply materials account, being funded 100% by MVGT funds. Three bids were received, this being the most responsive requirement specifications.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair. Aye. Mr. Curtis County Minister.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Commissioners, yesterday, we hosted an event with a lot of our partners through the Growth Partnership. We can't talk too much about it because we're recording a potential employer that come to Lorraine County, and a lot of the information is confidential. But I want to tell you that your Growth Partnership worked yesterday, and it worked fantastic. We got a lead. Mr. Twining's department was part of it. Team Lorraine County was part of it. The Chamber was part of it. The College was part of it. And within two days, we were able to position ourselves very, very strongly to potentially create jobs here. And the folks that brought them here were just overwhelmed by how fast this community moves, how professionally it moves, and how we can go from zero to being on top within 48 hours. And hopefully, we'll land this large employer. But your leadership with the Growth Partnership is making that all happen. And once I can give you additional information, we'll have some presentation materials we had and some things we did, but I can't do that right now until we know what the outcome is from that. Just know that your investment in the Growth Partnership is producing results that even I couldn't imagine just six or seven months ago, and we're getting the buzz. Team Neo was here with us, and they said, "We are setting the bar for Northeast Ohio." They think we're setting it further than that, but that's what they represent, is Northeast Ohio. And they said, "Everybody else's game's got to have to move to a new level to compete with us." And Ron, you were out there, and I don't think that I'm embellishing those comments too much, am I, sir?
No.
It was a very good event for us.
Even I was impressed.
So that's all I can tell you about that. And before that, we worked on a wire grant that the state's going to submit to, two of those, to DOL. Only, we're hopeful that one will be selected. But we did work collaboratively with the College and Magnet on that, which is being funded through the Fund for our Economic Future. We were able to, within four days, put together a letter of intent that was just a stunning amount of work that we worked well into the evenings with. I think there was emails going back and forth, 2:00, 3:00 o'clock in the morning, getting ready for that. And then we had two weeks to put together a collaborative relationship with multiple partners across 16 different counties in Northeast Ohio. And we have never undertaken that kind of leadership role before. I want to thank the Board. You did pay for half of the consultant to come in and collaborate with the College. College picked up half the cost. We picked up half the cost. And we were all able to open our rolodex and our networks and we think make a powerful, dynamic, successful proposal. And the state should be making this election within the next week or two. I did have discussions with Jennifer Ruggles, who is our new friend, Marie Greeno, for the area, about trying to position ourselves. And Magnet has talked to Lee Fisher, and I'll be asking probably the Commissioners to do a letter of support on top of what you've already done for the wire proposal. But once again, Lorraine County, with our partners, is positioning ourselves as a leader in the region. It's nice to be in front. It's a little bit hard to not lose your wind when you're out in front of everybody, but you guys are providing the resources, and I can't thank you enough. And I'll hopefully make a presentation. Maybe Ron can help me with that next week on exactly what wire it's all about. It's very keenly competitive. We stand a chance just like anybody else, but the work will be able to be reused and reused, position ourselves with the state for funding within the region in specifically addressing the problems that we're having in high-tech manufacturing with the workforce and the inability to continue to provide successful employees into that marketplace. And that's what Magnet's all about. And manufacturing, everybody thinks manufacturing is dead in Northeast Ohio, and it's not dead.
No.
It's alive and it's well. Productivity is up 50%. Jobs are down 23%. That's because productivity is up. Manufacturing is still a key in Northeast Ohio. And every time you talk to people, they don't stay informed. They're all thinking manufacturing is gone. A lot of the smokestack manufacturing is gone. The 2,000 employee manufacturing has diminished significantly. We all know that. But small to medium-sized manufacturing is really happening in Northeast Ohio. We need to position ourselves with the region to be successful. Ron, you can jump into that conversation if you want. You're the Community Development Director, so go ahead.
The only thing that I would add, and it's an obvious statement, is things have evolved over the last 10 years. Things that used to be done manually are now being done with high-tech computer, and that's improved productivity. The workers have... Certainly, the skill set, stamping has been quite a big item over the last 10 years here in Lorraine County. So it's been a retooling effort, and while it appears that manufacturing has taken a second-place seat, it's still very strong, very healthy. Lorraine County, you either do one of three things in economic development. You grow it, you mine it, or you make it, and Lorraine County is extremely good at making it. So that continues.
Thank you, Ron, and we'll bring you some updated presentations on that. But you know, all the years I've been doing this, the last year, I've never seen the amount of leadership coming out of Lorraine County that I see right now, and it's because the Board of Commissioners has supported all of these initiatives. I say that because we're going to be struggling here soon, and we're at a critical point to provide the leadership that's necessary to participate actively in improving our community in Northeast Ohio. And I'm going to continue to say that out here because we don't get our word out enough. So I'm going to continue. You'll hear me speaking more and more about the things that you are funding and supporting and leading in so that maybe some days, somebody else will understand what's going on. Personally, thank you very much, Commissioners. I appreciate the resources that you have given us to be able to do a good job for Lorraine County. So my comments, Ron.
I just want to comment on the first subject about job creation. If we do land an employer, I think before the Growth Partnership was around, there was many times an employer wanted to come to Lorraine County, and we couldn't get ourselves together enough to even put a package together, even be in the running for a new employer to come here. And without the Growth Partnership, well, now that we have the Growth Partnership, now we can get in the game.
You are so correct. Yesterday, there was three potential sites in Ohio, and I have to be careful again when I say here. One of the sites came off the radar screen because they weren't able to pull together and put a presentation together because I think I heard somebody was on vacation, so there was nobody there to do anything. That don't happen. It may have happened a decade ago here, I don't know, but it don't happen in Lorraine County. And no one particular person or entity is going to be diminishing that process by their inability because there's too many people in the game. There's too many partners, and there's too many resources coming to the table. We sat in the conference room Wednesday afternoon, and we needed some private sector people to come in and talk to this company. They had requested certain segments of the community because they wanted to talk about the labor force and the community. They wanted to talk to HR people and employers around Lorraine County. A little bit unique on this type of visit. So Wednesday afternoon, we... Everybody said, "Well, we'll go back and call." But no, we've got our cell phones out. We sat there. We all went into our rolodex, and we made calls right from that conference room. And by the next morning, we had more HR people and employers, owners of companies, in that meeting. And you're talking about 10 hours later, and they were able... They stopped what they were doing. They cleared their rolodex. They cleared their schedules, and they came out and worked with us that quickly. So it's not just government and education, nonprofit. It's the community is really coming together, and with the private sector also. So you're right. Probably a year or two ago, we were having problems making these kind of responses. We're not now. In fact, I think we're maybe overresponding. I think we kind of overwhelmed them, and that's a good thing. I'm very happy to be able to say we overwhelmed people. Better we overwhelm them than we underwhelm them.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Norris, mechanic prosecutor.
Commissioners, House Bill 9, which is the new Open Records Act, the major provisions of that are going to be coming into effect in September. Our office would like to kind of team up with the prosecutor's office to conduct a training session for all the county officers and maybe use your facilities and ask your assistants in helping to get the word out. We think that's a service that, in combination with the Commissioners, we can provide for all of our county offices. Kind of have a pie in the sky thing. If that goes well, or maybe depending on how it works, we might be able to invite people from other public entities too, although that might not have the facilities to do that. But just wanted to give you a heads up. We're going to ask to team up with the Commissioners in doing that and providing that service for our other county offices.
Well, that's a good thing because me and Lynn just had that conversation yesterday because we just attended all these training things, and we said we need to get it because April... We have our meeting in April, so September. They're coming in here in October, karma, and so we want to do it after that, so that would have been good.
Let me make a suggestion so we can maximize our resources. I think that we should get with Chara with the PSI. We already have that relationship where we're doing all the government training and packaging here in the building a couple nights a week. We're struggling with that, by the way. Some of the sessions have been good and well-attended. Others have not been so successful. So we need to continue to work with our partners there. And we will. We've been really busy, but we need to put the press on. But we could possibly structure something through PSI to provide that training. Ron, who's running point with Chara right now with, for us?
Me.
Okay, there we go.
Can I have my contact, first of all?
Well, you know, we have something in place already, and I think we should capitalize upon what's in place, and we may be able to get some economies out of that.
How much training is required, Jim? Three hours for only official staff?
Well, when the bill comes in effect, all elected officers have to get three hours every term.
Or they're designated.
Or they're designated, but usually...
We've already designated. You just don't know it.
Usually, there's somebody else that gets the responsibility of doing it. And we want to make sure all the people in the various departments are up to date on these changes.
We also have the Lorraine County Community Alliance, which might be able to assist.
Ron, could you... Well, you have Vince up there, so you can bring those pieces together.
Yep.
Great.
Other than that, we have no new litigation. I guess, I guess, once people know you don't have any money, they stop suing you to try and take it away.
Mr. Norris' report.
No report this morning.
Mr. Buck?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For those recycling nuts out in the world, I want you to know that this week, I took my aluminum cans to Blue Star Recycling, and I got $6.72. It's wonderful to get them off my back porch in time for Easter, but even better is they gave me a flyer, and there's a coupon on it that I think gives me an extra five cents a pound if I come back, so. For those of you who don't know where Blue Star Recycling is, it's on Williams Street in Alaria, and they have quite an operation there. And they are in partnership with our Lorraine County... And they are in partnership with our Lorraine County Sal Waste Department. So I invite you to stop by. They recycle all kinds of stuff there, and it's an interesting operation. Also, I'd like to thank Linda Jacobs from Carlisle Township, who let me know that Don Flood, who was a regular at our meetings for quite some time, is not doing so well health-wise. So on Monday, April the sixteenth, Carlisle Township is going to host a Don Flood Day at their township meeting at seven p.m. And any of you who might like to send Don a card, I'm sure he would like to receive it. And from my past experience with Don, he was a former volunteer fire department for many years, and in addition to that, he'd made wonderful pancakes. And thirdly, my office has sent letters to Sheffield Lake, Avon Lake, and Lorraine, letting them know about Nowaka's Transportation for Liveable Communities Initiative grants that are available for up to seventy-five thousand dollars for planning purposes. Each of those communities is on the proposed commuter rail corridor, and we hope that they might be able to take advantage of those planning grants as we look towards the fall and hopefully receiving some dollars to make commuter rail a reality. And you'll find in the back, All-Aboard Ohio's Spring Edition of the news about transit, rail, and they have some other publications, Why Rail, Why Transit, and What's Happening in Ohio. Thank you.
Nice job, Commissioner. TLCI Sheffield actually was awarded two years ago to plan their new waterfront.
And since they know how it works, maybe they'll just jump right in.
Bill and the mayor out there can do a real good job with that. Last Friday, I was invited to attend the Advanced Northeast Ohio Initiative, which is part of the Voices for Choices. It was a great turnout, economic development people from across a seventeen or eighteen county region were there to appear. I had the opportunity, I actually took a photo op with Mayor Jackson from Cleveland, signing the commitment Lorraine Counties would like to be part of their Advanced Northeast Ohio. President Church from the college did a very nice job speaking with the provost from the University of Akron. They had the minority business from Kiowa County speak with their new initiative. It was very nice to be there, and they're doing a very nice job getting people engaged. It was nicely, very nice turnout. And Mr. Cordes was there also. Commissioner Blair and I were able to take a trip by the invitation of Utilities Director Corey Timkaw of the City of Lorraine, their ideas for a new wastewater treatment plant. They gave a very nice tour with a new type of design commissioner with tunnels, and where they had received over three hundred acres of property from the old RTI slash US Steel. Their plans are in the beginning stages. They've applied for money for studies, but also have been putting a recycling center back on that property. Also, I was going to talk about the wire grant, but you did a very nice job. You guys threw that together very well. It was nice to see the teamwork and getting it rushed down to Columbus last week with the college and the county participating and drop off all, what was it, eighteen packages had to be dropped off at State House?
Yes, sir. And the college provided the printing and binding and the runner, and we provided the car and the driver, and we got in within forty-five minutes of the deadline. Again, thank you, Commissioner, because it's the resources that you're giving us that allow us to do these things.
Wonderful. Also, to the folks who went out and got the petitions filled with the fourteen thousand nine hundred and some odd signatures, if that's, the public's decided to put it on the ballot, we'll work within our budgets for the year, and we'll start discussing how we're going to maintain our budgets and still try and maintain county services. Transit with the first cuts is from the first of the year's budget that the Commissioners approved, and we'll start looking at all the air departments. Jim, I'd like us to get together and start doing a line item. I spoke with Commissioner Kokowski, we have to start talking about actually where dollars are going to have to come out of and where cutbacks are going to have to be maintained at, and then look at if we're going to sell the sales tax to the public, actually putting together where the dollars would go to. Captain Drawz Dusk, I spoke to the other day, if you've seen in the paper, about what we'd been working on and discussing with the consultant was moving prisoners out to Morrow County at a cost of a million to a million five a year. They were going to take fifty or sixty low-level offenders to nicer criminals for us, but I don't know if we're going to be able to do that at this point. And talking to Captain Drawz the other day, I saw that they're going to put a plan together now to talk to the common pleas judges about letting out low-level felons, so.
I'm prepared to have those discussions, Commissioners. I've been looking over the budget. I think that, you know me long enough to know now that I have Plan B, Plan C, and Plan D. I just don't like to have to blow the dust off them. So we do need to have those discussions. We did have, and we had earlier discussions in the year in case we were unsuccessful with this, was that we would need to go back and revisit those things. So I will, I will be getting with all of you soon to see where you want to take the county, and I'll be making some recommendations to you. So some things we're going to have to do.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
That's my report.
I have nothing, other than wish everybody a happy Easter. Board correspondents?
I move the reading be waived.
Second discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kokowski?
Aye.
Public comment?
I have a friend who was New Orleans evacuee and has been very undecided as to what to do, where she should go. She went back to New Orleans again in March, and the situation there is still very, very unpleasant and unlivable and so on. So she has finally decided she will be staying in Ohio, in Oberlin as a matter of fact. And as a consequence of that, she finally got around to changing her driver's license and registering her car and so forth. We went to the Elyria office, and she was most positively impressed with the efficiency, the pleasantness, the knowledgeability, and all of the help that they gave her with all of that minutiae of bureaucracy and so forth. So I think that the employees there and their supervisors there very much need to be publicly acknowledged as having impressed someone who is very used to a most indifferent big city.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Thank you, Elizabeth.
Mr. Carney?
Reason I stopped by today was that March twenty-ninth, last Thursday, the Commissioners passed a resolution to fulfill the Joint Development Engineering Service Agreement that we have with the Village of Grafton. And because of the infamous efficiency of Mr. Cordes and Teresa, we, I only had Mr. Holzman here to explain the ditch program that the Soil Conservation Service was explaining to you. So I didn't have an opportunity to fully be prepared to explain to you what's Route Fifty-Seven Reconstruction Project is all about. It's one of our major jobs. So with your indulgence, I'd like to explain a few items. The, as I say, the meeting took place, and that was to fulfill the Joint Development Engineering Service Agreement with the Village of Grafton for assistance in engineering and construction management of State Route Fifty-Seven's reconstruction project. Pogomiger Design Group of Bowling Green, Ohio, was awarded the contract in the amount of four hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, of which the Village of Grafton is utilizing three hundred thousand dollars from the Lorraine County Engineers' Bond Fund that we jointly made a very good effort between the Commissioners and the County Engineers' Office to supply those monies to municipalities contributing into the federal aid-funded program. The Village is paying the balance of that. So they're utilizing three hundred thousand dollars from our bond, and they'll be utilizing one hundred and twenty-two from their own funds. This project is, by the way, on the Northeast Ohio Coordinating Agency proposed federal aid program. They are on the tip. So this job, I believe, is going to be a little quicker and more efficient than the previous jobs that have been awarded but are looking to be on the tip. This project includes the segment of State Route Fifty-Seven between the northern incorporation limit of the Village of Grafton and the existing railroad located approximately six thousand two hundred and fifty feet south. This section of roadway is classified as a minor rural arterial and serves an average daily traffic of eleven thousand vehicles per day with three-point-five-percent truck traffic. The adjacent land uses consist of commercial industrial, multifamily housing, and residential developments. Traffic congestion on the two-lane pavement is the main problem in this corridor. Due to the lack of additional lanes, motorists attempting to patronize the adjacent businesses, especially left-turn movements during the peak hours, causes delays to through traffic on State Route Fifty-Seven. Residents also express concerns to my office of the safety in delays while attempting to enter onto the, into the traffic stream. In addition to the traffic problem, storm drainage is inadequate. This corridor is currently uncurbed in a skeleton storm sewer system, very old, is the, all runoff to that runs to the nearby Ropsen Ditch. The ditch frequently fills to flood stage during rain events, and homes are being serviced by the storm sewer experience flooding. Without significant roadway improvements, traffic and drainage conditions in this corridor will continue to deteriorate. Additional commercial development and residential subdivisions are currently planned along State Route Fifty-Seven, as we're all aware of. In addition, Commerce Drive will be extended to include the development of Commerce Park, which will feature approximately one hundred acres of light industrial office and additional commercial development. The proposed roadway design of State Route Fifty-Seven features a two-lane left-turn lane throughout the corridor and dedicated left-turn lanes at each intersection, approximately three-lane construction, similar to what we've done in Lorraine for Colorado Avenue. The installation of left-turn lanes will receive, will relieve congestion problems and provide a safe facility for the high number of mid-block left-turning movements. As the area develops, a coordinated traffic signal system will become necessary to manage this anticipated traffic volume. Although no additional traffic signals are currently warranted, the installation of these, of three signals appear to be imminent. This project includes the underground work associated with such a signal system. This project provides to construct, reconstruct State Route Fifty-Seven in a manner which provides positive drainage for the adjacent properties. A proposed storm sewer system will provide a new outfall to the east branch of the Black River with the capacity to drain the runoff from State Route Fifty-Seven watershed and the proposed Commerce Drive. Such an outfall will provide relief to Ropsen Ditch and reduce residential flooding. Total construction cost is estimated to be three-point-two million dollars, and construction is expected to begin in the spring of two thousand and nine. And I have maps available for you, and I have a news release for the newspapers and probably hear about it on the radio. Very pleased with this. Unfortunately, I didn't have a chance to explain it last week, but we're very proud of this. This is one of the classic jobs. This is going to be another Colorado Avenue. It's going to be one of our best jobs. We have some other applicants that are willing to participate, and I just, coincidentally enough, I just received a phone call from Mayor Gillick. He signed his contract. They'd like to do Lirnagle Road from Route Twenty to Route Ten, and they're requesting a neighborhood of over six hundred thousand dollars from our bond program. So it's a, it's a great, it's a great day for the Engineers' Office. Well, the Commissioners, the show that they're participating, they're very active in this, and they're very pleased to cooperate, and are very appreciative of your input and your loan program.
Yeah. How much have we expended on that bond program so far, the five million dollars that was dedicated to it?
At this point, roughly three-point-three million. We expect Lorraine to bring in another application, at least one more, possibly two. The larger one of those would be the Cooper Foster Park Phase One.
How, how much are we bonded in that? Have we bonded, are we still in notes?
We're still, we're still in notes.
We're still in notes, so we haven't gone to bonds, and we still have about three million to bond when we're done?
Three-point-three is total. We're working towards five. We have one-point-eight million left.
And then we talked about wrapping in some other things to do a super bond of some sort, is what we were talking about a year ago when we discussed this.
Yeah, well, I'll tell you, we're going to have a struggle with, I anticipate with everything that's going on, once we go to bond, it's going to cost us a little bit more money to borrow this money. Let me go on record saying right now, there's absolutely no way we're going to maintain our bond rating, okay? I'm looking and have been working on some restructuring scenarios to present to you with some of our debts that we may be able to, I thought we could save some money with. Specifically, the Justice Center, I have schedules on my desk now. The marketplace is really, is really tempting to get out there and refinance some of the, some of that debt, and I thought we could save about a million dollars in debt payments over about twenty years. But we're going to have to take a look at this right now. I talked to the underwriters last night, in fact, and I told them to start structuring with permanent reductions in where our revenues and expenses are, and start coming up with some scenarios and what they thought would happen with the, with the rating agencies. So I may have sat on that recommendation to do that, to do that restructuring, but I had forgotten that we still have highway notes that got to go to bonds this year. So we're going to have to come up with some strategies there, too. It won't be long before we have to address this with Moody and Fitchers, because as you know, Commissioner Kaylo, from the visit there, we're on watch already, all right? And that's, you know, we're at the tipping point when it comes to where they're going to go. I anticipate needing to go back to Manhattan sometime in May and make our case.
Or maybe not. If you don't ask the question, they won't give you the answer, Jim.
We're going to have to go to bond on this money, okay? That's, that's, you know, you and I had discussed whether we, but I, we can't stay in construction notes forever. And so that's another consequence, and I'm going to keep putting the consequences out there. I hope you don't mind.
I think the wrong people are listening, though.
Well, I don't know where else to say it, Commissioner.
Let me add, that's unfortunate situation of Lorraine County as it is this year. But if there's anything my office can do to help this situation, I appreciate it. However, thank you for approving last week the agreement that was signed, and we look forward to working with them. And if another municipality comes in, I'll be the first one to let you know what we can do to help you with this. Appreciate your help.
Thanks, Mr. Carney.
Thank you.
Maybe, maybe it'd be better to put the bond rating into more simple terms for the general public that does not understand what that means. It's like going for a loan, and when you go and look at your credit report, if, your savings is our carryover, if you don't have enough savings, they're, they're going to give you a higher interest rate when you go to borrow money. Is that an easy way for people to understand? So if we, by the end of this year, many of our departments are going to be running out of money, so that means we have to dip into our carryover. And the bond rating people are going to look at that and say, "Hey, what's going on here?" And our interest rate, when we do go to borrow money for projects like this, is going to be a lot higher. And Commissioners are trying to get the best bang for your buck, and that's why we're trying to not have to dip into that carryover.
You're completely correct, Commissioner. And the thing they're going to look at is the depletion of carryover, which is your savings account, your cash reserves. And as I've indicated before, we need several millions of dollars to be able, you saw what happened with Transit. We needed seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to keep the operation moving while we're waiting for money to come in. That money is part of your carryover, your project money. We move it around. It's like a shell game to be able to continue to provide for services. If you're, if you don't have that, what happens? Do you shut Transit down and wait for the federal government to send us our check? They're three months behind paying us. What do you do? Where do you get the money? That's why the carryover needs to be healthy, and the people that review us know that. They know we need operating capital. Commissioner Kaylo, you run a business. You need a line of credit. You need operating capital. You need to be able to do those things. Our revenue comes in at various timeframes, so we have to gap sometimes with our revenue also. And what they're going to be strategically concerned about the most is the difference between our revenue and our expenses, all right? We have a huge gap between our revenue and our expenses. They'll look at the cash depletion, and they're going to be concerned with that, but we're going to have to address the difference between the anticipated revenue and the anticipated expenses and what we're going to do about it. Because they're not going to be agreeable to maintaining our rating while we have such a large difference between those two numbers. And that's where we're going to be struggling significantly over the next year.
I see Mr. Nabokowski is waiting here. I'll yield my time if you'll let me speak after he does.
I think you should ask your question now.
It's not a question. I just want to compliment you on the fact that you're planning for a training session on the Open Records Law. I think you're the only entity that I've seen that is making that planning. Although it might be a good idea to invite other people in from other governmental entities, I think you can, should worry about getting the group so large that people can't really ask questions and get all the information that they ought to have. Won't the state provide free training for you? They used to, but whether they will under this new program, I don't know.
The answer is they are supposed to, Elizabeth, but...
Surely.
Surely.
Sorry.
I'm Mrs. Johnson.
Right. But we're not sure when that's going to happen, and we kind of think people have to start preparing for it now because you don't want to wait till the day before and then all of a sudden learn you have to do all these things.
Mr. Nabokowski, your turn. Welcome, Ron.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good to be here.
Morning, Ron.
I see yesterday, the yield curve...
Ron, you have to pull that mic up a little bit. Otherwise, you won't get on that video. Sorry.
The yield curve has been uninverting a bit. One thing you might consider, Jim, is talking to bond council about taking those bond anticipation notes, reducing amortizing principal, going out the whole eight years that you've got.
Yeah, I know we can recap...
Because the rates are going to be much lower on the note side.
They are and I know we've been recapitalizing the interest and I agree, we can look for a strategic point when to roll them into bonds. The problem with staying in the notes, though, is that this money will start coming back in from grants and so we have to look at just how long we want it out. We were looking for short-term bonds, but I agree with you. We'll look for a strategic point and I know you used to do this, so I appreciate the advice.
I have to try to figure out this. Let's see, click. Okay. I'm going to talk a little bit today about the thing that's really driving our problem in the clerk of court's office. Predatory credit card lending is about people abusing credit. It's about the abuse of people by financial institutions. Most of all, it's about people abusers soliciting credit abusers to earn usurious profits. And this is how we get involved. This is a picture of our caseload by type. See criminal cases which have been increasing high, single-digit every year are one problem, but the really big problem in our office is judgment liens and foreclosures. Both of these things go back directly to predatory plastic, to the abuse of credit card debt and the abuse of credit card customers. Here's a look at our... Of the tracking of credit card explosion that tracks our judgment liens. As credit cards became more and more common in everyday use and abuse, our caseload in the judgment area got greater and greater. You can see we were down at about less than 1,573 and we're now up close to 5,000. This year, we will do 5,000. And here's the explosion that you read about so much. Our office from '95, where it was just about 400, last year was 1,935. And I looked just on the way over here to check the first quarter of this year because that's really what we're talking about. We're going to be looking at closing down in November if we don't solve this financial problem. This year, if we keep up on the rate, we're up so far this year, 39.8% over last year's first quarter. So we've done 681 foreclosures in the first three months of the year as opposed to less than 500 in the first three months of last year. And two years from now, it's going to be... Next year's going to be worse and two years from now, the experts tell me, are going to be far worse. And it basically goes back to this credit card craziness. We're projecting next year, 2,700 foreclosures. Last year, we had 1,500. So you can see what that does to our office and what it does to people that you work for. It's a sad, sad thing. Usury. Here's some definitions. Well, you know what interest is. Well, by... That's what lenders charge for money. Part of this presentation is something we've done for high schools, so it gets a little basic. Forgive me. I'm trying to speak down to you. Interest rate is a percentage that banks charge or somebody charges. And usury is a charging of interest technically at a higher rate than the maximum legal percentage allowed by law. Credit card usury. Well, colonial America had strict usury laws. In fact, in the 19th century, Massachusetts, a 6% loan was usurious. And if in Massachusetts, somebody charged somebody else 6% for the use of money, they would lose the right to collect not only the interest, but the principal as well. Usury is considered one of the basic causes of inequality in the world and it's a bigger subject than most... The United States is the only country in the world, the only advanced country, probably the only country from the statistics I've seen that does not control the interest rate for consumer purchases. Through the first three quarters of the 20th century, U.S. loan sharking caused most states to maintain tough usury laws. Usury was then defined as charging interest in excess of 12% to 18%. Deregulation of the banking system in the late '70s and early '80s and successful lobbying by financial services industries has removed the protections that Americans long counted on. Here's some examples of usury today. Here's Mary Smith, not her real name, teacher and a mother of three. She was deserted by her husband and left $25,000 in credit card debt. She worked two jobs to pay $2,000 a month in credit card charges. She was assessed $25 late fees when she was late and nearly 30% interest because she was late. She was charged $25 over limit charges when those charges forced her over the limit on the card. Without charging anything at all new, her debt doubled to $49,574 by the time she was forced into bankruptcy. Another case is the case of Ruth Owens, $1,900 in original purchases on a Discover card. She paid $1,158 in penalties. She paid $2,072 in interest. She still owed $5,564 when she went to court. Discover took her to court. Judge found for the defendant, called Discover, called the whole business unconscionable, threw it out. Discover did not appeal because it is unconscionable. It is unconscionable. It is not unusual. Both these stories illustrate usury today, but neither would have happened in this country before 1978. 1978, and this is one of my suits and shirts. I had that shirt and I had that suit.
You wore that last week.
I still wear it when times get tough. Stores offered revolving credit account, that was at Pennies. And if you wanted to buy a range or washer and dryer, you went to your bank installment loan, excuse me. Sinuses from the weather. Or Consumer Credit Department. But the banks made about... Spent as about as much time working on a loan for $500 as they did for $500,000 or $5 million. So they had to find a better way. In 1958, Bank America, California big bank, the biggest bank in the world, I think, or one of the biggest banks in the world in California, started Bank Americard. Master Charge followed soon after. Thank you very much. Bank Americard was the card started in '58. In 1968, somebody put together a scheme to use computers and allowed other banks to sign into the Bank Americard system. Soon after, the banks in the east started something called Master Charge. These two banks competed. They're now Visa and Master Card. It was good debt and it worked for a while, but stagflation in the late '70s kind of changed everything. You can remember that. I was wearing that suit yet back then. Well, it's still... The price is overwhelming. Suffice it to say, although the federal funds rate, which is the basic rate that banks charge each other when they cover their reserve requirements, and has been as low as 1% last year for a while, which is one of the reasons Danny wasn't allowed to give you... Wasn't able to give you as much money as he would have liked to in 2005. Got up to 17% in the late '70s. I was in legislature at the time. The banks came out of the woodwork. If they're charging 12%, which was our usury rate in Ohio, they obviously can't make any money. In fact, they have to lose a lot of money if they're paying 17% to get money. So they lobbied very hard to get things changed and they did it quite well. Banks employ an awful lot of lobbyists. What they did was they forced... They got a Supreme Court case that said that they were allowed to import their usury rate from the state in which they were based so that if they were selling credit cards in Ohio and they were from South Dakota, say, who had no usury rate, they could charge as much as they wanted to. And that's exactly what they did, which caused, of course, the local banks to try to catch up. This happened in South Dakota because the governor of South Dakota was promised by Mr. Riston, the president of Citibank, that he'd move there and other banks would move there, too, if they got rid of their rate. They were trying to do economic development. A lot of terrible things happen when you try to do economic development. Anyway, Arizona took their rate up to 40%. They weren't entirely abandoning the usury rate, 40%. Virginia got rid of theirs. Delaware, which got most of the banks, as you can see here, got rid of their usury rate and the race was on. Controller of the currency is the number one regulator of banks in this country. The controller of the currency controls the national banks or the national banks control the controller of the currency. The controller of currency is a department, is a member, is a part of the Department of Treasury. The controller of the currency obviously takes care of those banks. It has an intrinsic conflict of interest because it's funded by the banks themselves. So although it talks a good game about protecting consumers, it doesn't do a very good game. Talks the talk, does not walk the walk. And in fact, the controller of currency is the prime enabler of predatory lending in the country. They with the Federal Reserve Bank, who, when you watch the news stories, you always talk about the Federal Reserve Bank. Federal Reserve Bank is not a public agency. The Federal Reserve Bank is owned by a few of the very largest banks. It creates money supply and controls the money supply. It uses the bully pulpit sometimes to tell its member banks to behave, but it doesn't do anything serious about making them. The state of California's been very good in consumer protection and they tried to protect people by putting a limit on the fees that banks could charge. Banks at this time are only charging $15 or so for a late charge or an over limit charge. And the California legislature thought they can control that. But the controller of the currency ruled in a ruling that fees were the same things as interest for purposes of the National Bank Act of 1864, which is the controlling legislation. The banks have kept the legislators from re-dealing with this subject, which they should through campaign contributions, obviously. It's Smiley versus Citibank. The court ruled the sense of controller of currency had equated fees with interest rates. The California legislature was powerless to do anything about protecting its people from these predators. Here's what's happened since. Consumer credit debt has gone from 422 to 800 billion in just a few short years. Fee income at the banks went from 2.6 billion in 1980 to over $22 billion last year. And on average, 80 mail solicitations for credit cards go to different houses, to your household, my household, every year, maybe more in some cases.
I think I get 80 a day.
It seems sometimes like 80 a day.
It seems like it.
There are now five credit cards per average household. Banks' rate, of course, grew along with the foreclosure rate. You can see before, million and a half personal foreclosures in 2002 and you see that rate, it distracts the other rate. 30 million people are late on at least one credit card each month. And we call it predatory because it targets the desperate. I read a story about Citigroup, Citifinancial, which is the subprime component of Citigroup, the largest bank in the world, who was foreclosing on a poor widow woman in Massachusetts, in Mississippi, who was mentally retarded and had a mentally retarded son and never should have been in that. You know, we simply would not have made the loans they're making today when I was a banker. The first rule was, well, it hurts your customer. That rule is just thrown out the window. Do they have the capacity to repay the loan? That rule has been thrown out the window. And the day that this woman had come back from talking to her lawyer about fighting the foreclosure, trying to keep her house in one of the poorest neighborhoods in Mississippi, she received a check for $5,000 in the mail from Citifinancial. They're trying to get her to open a credit card. I have no idea how this kind of stuff can happen, but it does. And we call it predatory because it targets the innocent, mostly high school and college kids. People with no income, no credit history, no permission from their parents. And yet, one out of 10 teens has a credit card today, some are only 13 years old. Fastest growing group of filers, according to the Senate Banking Committee, for bankruptcy are filers under 25. Here are the consequences. Bad grades, of course. Empty pockets, of course. Depression, of course. And in many cases, suicide. We had one case where a student was $12,500 in debt on 10 different credit cards. I mean, tell me that anybody cares about their customer when you issue a student without a job 10 different credit cards and let them run up $12,500 in debt and they finally take their own life to get out of it. Another one, $2,500 in debt only and no note, but she left the card spread out on the bed to send a message. Georgetown University study says that credit card debt is a greater threat than alcohol and sexually transmitted diseases on their campus. University of Indiana administrator said that we lose more students to credit card debt than we do to academic failure. We prepared this presentation with some advice for new users and I'll go right through this because you're very sophisticated people. You don't need this from me. We asked people to shop around. By law, federal law, they have to put a disclosure box on anything they send you that discloses it and they have to answer your questions about annual percentage rate, grace period, finance charges, calculations. And the calculations get tricky. They'll go back two months. You think you're paying off the entire balance and not having to... Not picking up a charge, they'll charge you for the average of the last two months in many cases. These marketing guys are really clever at ways of reaching into your pocket. The other fees, late, et cetera, over limit and universal default provision. We suggest that people, if they have to have a credit card, see their credit union. Credit unions are owned by the people that put the money in the banks, so profit is not their number one bottom line. They care about their customers a little bit more. Teaser rates, avoid these things, skip a payment deals, benefit you, not the bank. Credit life insurance is one of the worst things that I ever see. I mean, they pay out about 40% on balance. And the banks went to the legislature and one of the Great Depression reforms was stopping banks from owning insurance companies, but they've got it again now. So they really push credit insurance hard. Credit insurance does not protect you. It protects the bank. And we advise people to pay about 10 days in advance because they come up with all kinds of tricky ways to change that grace period when you're going to have to pay debt. And if you're late once, a nice 8% or 10% card turns into a 32% monster. We suggest you pay balances every month or pay at least 5%, not the 2% or 3% that they allow you to get along in the minimum. It'll take you 22 years at 2% to pay off whatever your debt is, which is insane for what? For a suit or for sometimes a hamburger at McDonald's? You'd be paying for it in 2023 or something. And beware of the universal default provision. This is a provision that is in almost... Most of their contracts, although Chase, I think, is taking it out now and Citibank is taking it out of their contract, they raise your rate for any reason. If your credit score goes down, if you're late on a car or house payment somewhere else, if you have too much overall debt, if you have too much available credit, somebody sends you a credit card. All of a sudden, your FICO score goes down and your universal default provision takes your interest rate from 12% to 32%. If you even inquire about a mortgage or a car loan, we advise people to get that, to call the company, tell them, I can't make the payment and you're going to be forced to default. If you have to, go to a credit counselor because they cost you some money, but in many cases, they save people who can't control it themselves. They help them get out of debt, out of problems. But avoid home equity loans. The biggest problem of all of this is these, many of these foreclosures that we get were credit card debt, harmless debt. I mean, people owed $25,000, $30,000 unsecured. The worst that could happen is they could be garnishyed. Part of their payroll, part of their paycheck would go to pay a debt that they really owed, but they get out of that because somebody talks them into putting their house up. And the next thing you know, five years down the road, they're in foreclosure. Last resort, of course, is bankruptcy and we always advise people, never tap your anything 401K or any of that because they can't... That is still protected. Although social security payments are no longer protected thanks to a Supreme Court judgment that said that the banks can garnishy a social security check to pay for student loans. Wonderful. Sometimes the best thing to do with your credit card is right there. And then, we give this little talk to groups of people around the county because we're trying to advertise the fact that we do do passports. And we'd like to tell you that my passport office, which last year you were very kind in letting us open an office in North Ridgeville, which has been well-received by the community, and it has turned into a great passport office for us. So we haven't had to come back to you and ask for money to help run the title division because passports are stemming, taking care of the deficit. It's worked out very well for us. So I'm just here to kind of give you... We do passports and pictures. Picture was Richard Nixon, I think.
Yeah.
We deal with anybody.
Left that picture in your suit from the '70s?
Other points I didn't get a chance... Well, I guess that's making... I've given you the figures. Just to wish you best, offer my help on the campaign if that's what it takes. I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that if this quarter, 25, what is it?
Quarter percent.
Quarter percent sales tax does go down and our budget doesn't go up, the courts, I think, are going to be making you give us the money anyway. I'm pretty sure about that because you're not going to shut down the justice system. But it'd be a horrible thing to have to do. So thank you for your attention. Any questions?
No. Thank you, Ron.
It's a good presentation, Ron. Very eye-opening.
Entertained a motion to move an executive session is outlined by the county administrator and county prosecutor.
So moved.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Blair.
Aye.
Mr. Kelo.
Aye.[1746.33]
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at nine thirty at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Alaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
In seventeen eighty-seven, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In eighteen oh three, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present eighty-eight, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until eighteen ten, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in eighteen twenty-two, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial, and although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships. In eighteen oh seven, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in eighteen oh seven, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which twenty years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in eighteen seventy-four. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In eighteen ninety-four, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In eighteen thirteen, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by eighteen eighty known as Fields Corners and was the site of the town's waterwell. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In eighteen ten, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in eighteen thirteen, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in eighteen twenty-three, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's Township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in eighteen eleven to the Beaver Creek. By eighteen fifteen, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeville, today the intersection of Roots Fifty-Eight and One Thirteen, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By eighteen thirty-six, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in eighteen seventy-three, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In nineteen oh nine, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In nineteen seventeen, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's twenty-one townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In eighteen fourteen, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in nineteen eleven, with the remainder of the township becoming the Village of Avon in nineteen seventeen. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in eighteen fifteen and sixteen. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until eighteen twenty-four, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the eighteen twenty-two reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the Village of Sheffield. In eighteen sixteen, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range Nineteen. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July fourth, eighteen seventeen. The Village of Brownhelm Mills, located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow, was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in eighteen sixteen. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village, the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In eighteen seventy-seven, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alaria Township, Carlisle was settled in eighteen sixteen by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in eighteen twenty-two, Carlisle Township became its own entity. Leport developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In eighteen forty, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over ten thousand acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alaria and the city, which also bears his family name. In eighteen seventeen, Artemus Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish a new village at the Y of the Black River branches. Mills were constructed and the main street cleared. Beebe's crew also erected a home for Mr. Ely at Broad and East Bridge Streets and a home for himself across the street, which became the Beebe Tavern. Both structures avoided demolition until well into the twentieth century. In eighteen twenty-two, Mr. Ely spearheaded the movement to create Lorraine County. He donated the land for the county courthouse, thus influencing the choice of Alaria as the county seat. Mr. Ely's little village would develop into a city with a varied industrial base as well as the center of government for Lorraine County. Simon Durand came to America as an interpreter for Revolutionary War hero, French general Lafayette. Durand remained in the new nation and in the winter of eighteen seventeen moved from New York State to the one hundred sixty acres he had purchased south of Brownhelm. Ten years later, the population of the area was enough to support the formation of a new township. With the southern portion ceded to Brighton and the northern portion annexed from Brownhelm, the township of Henrietta was created in eighteen twenty-seven. Although New England families represented the majority of settlers to the area in eighteen eighteen, one of the pioneers was William Welling of Montgomery County, New York. History is not clear if the community was named in honor of Welling or for the famous English Duke of Wellington, hero of Europe's recent Napoleonic wars. With the coming of the railroad, Wellington grew into an agricultural marketplace and in fact was the nation's leader in cheese production from eighteen seventy to nineteen hundred. The county fair, now located in Wellington, helps to continue the depiction of small-town America shown in native son Archibald Willard's famous painting, The Spirit of Seventy-Six. In eighteen eighteen, Joseph Sage and the family of his son-in-law, John Laborie, journeyed through a severe winter from Connecticut to their new homestead in Huntington Township. More pioneering families came to the area, and by eighteen twenty-two, the population was such that the Medina County Commissioners incorporated the township, using the Huntington, Connecticut hometown of many of the settlers, as its new name. Lumber, grain, and cheese dominated the local economy. In eighteen twenty-four, when Lorraine County came into full operation, Huntington was transferred from Medina County. The citizens of Old Russia Township that had been first settled in eighteen eighteen requested detachment from Black River Township in eighteen twenty-five. The Town and College of Oberlin were founded in eighteen thirty-three and would grow to dominate the area. The Oberlin concept combined a Christian community and a Christian coeducational institute. Through the influence of founders John Shipford and Philo Stewart, New York businessman Arthur Tappan, and noted evangelist Charles Finney, the college would become not only co-ed but also multiracial and the nation's leader in the abolitionist movement. The independent spirit that created the first Russia Township was evident once again in nineteen ninety-two, as new Russia Township detached itself from Oberlin. In eighteen twenty, the Peter Penfield family began the permanent settlement of the area he had first selected in the fall of eighteen eighteen. Penfield Township's organizational election was held in April of eighteen twenty-five. The first religious service was held in eighteen twenty-six, and the first school was in session in the summer of eighteen twenty-nine. The township's first post office put the emphasis on post and not the office. As the Penfields lived well off the established mail route, a hollow tree near the river was used by the local residents for sending and receiving the mail. The township, with its fertile soil, grew into a part of Lorraine County's rich agricultural heritage. In the fall of eighteen twenty, Abner Loveland Jr. became the first permanent settler of Brighton. Within a year, the families of Joseph Kingsbury and Abner Loveland Sr. had arrived and the new community began to grow. With elections held in the spring of eighteen twenty-three, Brighton Township was being organized at the same time the area was being transferred from Medina to Lorraine County. Like much of the new county, Brighton was essentially agricultural. Although Pittsfield's first settlers arrived in eighteen thirteen, the area was considered too dangerous because of the British and Indian activity connected to the War of eighteen Twelve. By eighteen twenty, the land was surveyed and Milton Whitney became the owner of a large parcel. Whitney arranged for the Waite brothers of Russia Township to become the first permanent settlers in the spring of eighteen twenty-one. By eighteen thirty-one, there were enough residents to request that the county incorporated township independent of Wellington. Pittsfield was chosen as the township's name to honor the Massachusetts hometown of many of the area's pioneers. LaGrange Township's first settler was Nathan Clark, who in the fall of eighteen twenty-five, established his new homestead on the east branch of the Black River. By the summer of eighteen twenty-six, fourteen more settlers had arrived. The name LaGrange, which is French for the farm, was chosen to honor French general Lafayette, as it was also the name of his country estate. In eighteen twenty-seven, the area was separated from Carlisle Township and reorganized with elections in April into the new township of LaGrange. By eighteen seventy-five, the center had grown into a village, also incorporated as LaGrange. The pioneer settler of the Camden area was Leonard Clark. Over the next four years, other families moved into the area, including Roswell Babcocks, who built the first frame house in eighteen thirty-three. Early on, the area was divided between Henrietta and Brighton Townships. In eighteen thirty-five, the new township of Camden was created by the county commissioners and the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. When the first post office was established in eighteen thirty-five, the community was called Panalise. The name was changed to Camden, then later to North Camden. In eighteen fifty-two, the Lake Shore and Michigan Southern Railroad called its station Binghamton, but that was soon changed as the town adopted the name Kipton. Kipton's more important connection to the railroad was a tragic collision in eighteen ninety-one. The wreck was instrumental in the creation of standardized or railroad time. Rochester was the last township within the present-day boundaries of Lorraine County to be settled. Stephen Babcock brought his family from Massachusetts in the spring of eighteen thirty-two to settle on land he had prepared the previous year. The area grew quickly, and by eighteen thirty-five, the Commissioners formed a new township with the first elections held in April of eighteen thirty-six. The township's farming and related businesses grew with the population. By eighteen eighty, close to seven hundred citizens lived in the area. The population shifted from Rochester Center to Rochester Station when the Big Four Railroad came through the township. The small-town boom would turn to bust when the railroad eliminated Rochester as a scheduled stop. The depot would be used as a schoolhouse, as the home of the Rochester Rod and Gun Club, and today, as the home of the Rochester Historical Society.
Hey, buddy, how you doing there? Here, have a treat, okay? No one can deny the loving devotion we get from our dogs, and I think we all agree, we get back more love than we give them. I'm Dick Iddard, I'm reminding you, if you share your love with a dog, you'll never regret it. There is really nothing like a dog to spark up your life, whether you're a youngster, a senior citizen, or somewhere in between. And dogs have a whole lot of affection to share. Okay, is that good? You don't have to go far to hear heartwarming adoption stories.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend.
With my husband is like saying man's best friend. He truly loves that dog. He feels it's part human. It's his second daughter, as Erica said. It's definitely a prize. She's queen of the house, basically. She's a good lover. She gives us a lot of attention. She's a good girl.
We had a cat before. We had Abby. And Abby adapted very well. She is best friends with that cat. She will not harm that cat in any way. She's amazing. I love her. When I'm in bed at night, Abby will jump up with me and she will pull the covers back and she will lay under the covers and lay her head on the pillow, just like a human.
I encourage anyone to go to the Lorain County Kennel to adopt a dog. It's given our family great satisfaction and a great reward.
After, you know, a bad day at work or anytime you come home, it's just always nice. They kind of turn your mood around when you come in the door and they wagging their tails and jumping on you. And it's a great feeling to know that they're happy to see you and that they love you just as much as you love them. She is good with our other dog. She's good with people. She likes attention. And she likes to cuddle up with you.
It's funny, when Lily, when you kind of discipline her sometimes when she does something bad or she always seems to roll on her back and put her paws in the air and just look up at you with a sad look. So it's kind of hard to even get mad at her when she does something like that. So we kind of laugh at that.
And it's always amusing when she does get a spurt of energy and want to run around and I was like, "Oh, my gosh, Lily's good to play now."
Yeah, 'cause like, sometimes I'm on the couch or whatever and she'll hop down and she always like tries to bite her own tail and then that kind of like keys on our other dog, Rocky, to chime in and try to, you know, bite her tail a little bit and then they start playing around a little bit.
One day, we came home with some food from... I just really wanted a burger, so we had a burger and I had it sitting on the tray table by the couch. And I got up for a minute and got a drink, came back, and Lily was licking her lips. She had eaten the whole thing. And I was not very happy with her, so I screamed and told Kurt to come down and get her away from me because I was just so upset. But we both lived and I was fine afterwards.
One of the best things about adopting a dog from the kennel, at least for us, was again just giving this dog, who knows what would have happened to her, a new life, and also giving our other dog a companion during the day. It's just fun to have the two dogs and take them for walks and watch them play. And it brought us closer as well.
You know, it just makes you feel better as a person that, you know, you're giving a dog a better chance to live a life.
Actually, I enjoy the exercise because I need to, trying to lose weight, Salem makes me get out of the house every day. And so I have to take him for a walk, even if I don't want to. And he's not that much trouble because he was pretty much housebroken when I got him from the pound. I really liked the older pet because Salem was kind of, whoever had him before, they really kind of housebroke him. So I didn't really have to go through the potty training deal. I just had to let him out and find a place for him to go. And I think older pets, especially for people who don't have children, are kind of good because Salem, he's real playful, but he's not, he gets tired and he lays down and he doesn't want to be bothered, and that's fine with me. So he's not always wanting to play, you know, because puppies have a lot of energy. And Salem has quite a bit of energy, but sometimes he just lays on his pillow and he's like, "Don't bother me. I won't bother you." And sometimes when he wants to play, he wants to play, and that's okay. I got Salem at the Lorain County Dog Pound. I found him on the internet, actually. He was, they had his picture on the internet. And so I called and he was still there. And so I immediately went over and looked at him. We went outside and played and he jumped in the car and wouldn't get out. And there we were, so we rode our way home. So it was love at first sight. He's a very good companion. I can always depend on him to be here and greet me with, you know, open arms when I come in the door. He's very protective of me and he lets me know when anyone is outside or in the driveway. So I feel safe with Salem, you know, even though he's a small dog. He gives me a safe feeling just in my own home. If I'm having a bad day sometimes and I'm just not in a real good mood, you know, he'll come up and snuggle up to me like, "Hey, Mom, it's okay." I think other people should adopt a pet, and even an older dog. The Lorain County Pound has so many wonderful dogs. All you have to do is go over there and look. I mean, even now, I still go on the website and I tell Salem, "Don't you want a little brother or sister?" Because they have all these little cute dogs over there and they all need good homes. And if you're looking to adopt a pet, I suggest you try the Lorain County Dog Pound first. I mean, you pay for the license and just a nominal fee, and you got a great dog and a great companion and somebody that's going to be in your life for the rest of your life and will love you no matter what.
Hello, my fellow commissioners and I are here at the Lorain County Dog Kennel on Halloway Street, just south of Illyria City Discount Value City. We invite you to stop out and see the facility here. We have lots of dogs available for adoption. We also encourage all dog owners to register your dog each year and get a dog license. That's your dog's ticket home in case it gets lost. It has a number and can easily be identified so that your dog can be returned to you in case he or she might take a little walk and you are unaware of it.
Along with the regular licensing that the county requires for all dogs, we also have a special dog license. It's a Special Heart Medical Care License Tag for an additional $5. And the proceeds from that go to help us when we pick up a stray that's injured, hurt, or needs extreme medical care. It helps defer the cost for us. So next time you get your dog license, please pick up the Special Heart tag.
The Lorain County Commissioners would like to welcome you to come down to the Lorain County Dog Kennel. We also have a website that you can check out. Just click on Dogs to Adopt. There's plenty of dogs to choose from. It's like this little girl right here. This is Sadie. You can come down, make sure it's a good match for you. Take the dog out, take it for a walk. But please, if you're thinking about adopting a dog, come out to the Lorain County Dog Kennel and see if there's a match for you.
Give the Lorain County Dog Kennel a call or check their website for photos of currently available dogs. Remember, your best friend is just waiting for you.